Important meeting today, Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, being held at the Microsoft Teams platform. Please note that this meeting will be recorded in future public comment and feature public comment. Commissioners, ask to mute their microphones when they're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina Jackson, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present and can hear me by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood? Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner G?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Page? Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present. This public meeting of Planning Commission is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Norther's March 12, 2020 executive order due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of COVID-19. A quorum of the Commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the city's planning department's webpage, with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Even if the members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Planning Commission is convening by video conference via Microsoft Teams app as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the May 4th, 2021, public hearing, will any commissioners have any corrections or changes to the minutes? If so, please state your name before stating the changes. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the meeting. Commissioners, mute their microphone when they're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to speaking. Commissioners, before making the motion, please identify yourself.
This is Commissioner G. I move for acceptance of the May 2021 minutes as presented.
This is Sherri Thaxton. I'll second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to approve the minutes from the May 4th, 2021, public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled public hearing is Tuesday, July 6, 2021, 1:30 p.m. and will be held in person in the Portsmouth City Council Chamber at 1:30 p.m. Item number CA-21-02 will be presented to City Council at their June 8, 2021, for action. Item S-21-01 will be presented to City Council for action at their July 13, 2021, or July 27, 2021, meeting, or as otherwise noted. We also ask that you mute your microphone when you are not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments. Our first public hearing item, CUP-21-08 Paradise Creek Industrial Quarter. Stephen E. Heretic, on behalf of P.E.R. Properties, Inc., is requesting to amend the use permit conditions for UP-15-05, amended and superseded by UP-19-12 at 3999 Venier Road, formerly 3991 Elm Avenue, in the industrial IN zoning district, to allow the operation of two self-contained enclosed cement mixers. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as heavy industrial. The property is owned by P.E.R. Properties, Inc., and is identified as Tax Map 387, Parcel 10. Staff Coordinator is Julie Chopp. The applicant has requested a 90-day deferral of this application. Our next public hearing item, S-21-01 Belmont Avenue, W. Leighton Lord III of Nexus Pruitt LLC, on behalf of BKT Enterprise LP, requests the closure of a portion of Belmont Avenue in order to conduct redevelopment on their adjacent property occupied by Southeastern Freight Lines Trucking Company. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for transportation. The property is right-of-way owned by the City of Portsmouth. The staff coordinator is Carl Jackson. Will the staff coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time?
Oh, hi Regina. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Planning Commissioners. This is Carl Jackson, Manager of Transportation Planning. The applicant's request is for a street closure of a paved one-lane portion of Belmont Avenue, approximately .2 miles between the I-264 Victory Boulevard westbound on-ramp and the Southeastern Freight Lines property line. The closure area is city right-of-way, and as you could see from the map, the area is surrounded by properties owned light industrial. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as transportation. The street closure area is surrounded to the north and west by property used by Southeastern Freight Lines, Storage and Trucking Company, zoned industrial, and currently the only user of the street closure area. To the east are the remaining sections of Belmont Avenue and City of Portsmouth right-of-way. South of the property is Interstate 264 westbound on-ramp owned by the Virginia Department of Transportation. Based on the submitted conceptual site plan, the owner intends to redevelop the site by expanding their terminal building and adding additional truck parking. The street closure area will be used as one-way private gated access entrance to the site for employee vehicles. The existing street will also be extended as a private two-way egress to the northern portion of the site on Elmhurst Lane. Primary access to the site for truck traffic will also remain on Elmhurst Lane. The applicant will be required to submit a full site plan for approval and meet all relevant city codes before any redevelopment of the property can begin. The Virginia Department of Transportation has stated that the street closure will not impact access to I-264, and the city engineer will require that the remaining portion of Belmont Avenue be signed for one-way traffic westbound upon completion of the proposed site improvements. The city will also need to retain a drainage and utility easements within the closure area. All water lines, sewer lines, and fire hydrants will be turned over to the property owner pending installation of new meters at the owner's expense. End of city maintenance will be at the meter locations based on the attached Public Utilities Plan. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the applicant's request for closure of a portion of Belmont Avenue in order to conduct redevelopment of adjacent property occupied by Southeastern Freight Lines Trucking Company. Staff finds that the proposed conditions, the street closure, will not negatively impact any other property owners and is consistent with the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. And I am available for questions if you have any.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions for Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson, can you put up slide number six for me, please?
Oh, sure.
I think it's six. I did take a trip down there and took a look at this.
Can you see it now, Mr. Chairman?
Right. See the vehicles sitting there?
That are parked on the right-hand side?
Right. Would they be impacted by the closure?
Technically, yes, they would, but that property itself is also owned by the applicant or by, I think, BKT Enterprises. So it would only impact them, I guess, those vehicles that have to be parked elsewhere.
Right, because right next to where that SUV sits is Elliott Avenue.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, right, exactly. The next street where you can make, if you're coming from the other direction, the next street where you can successfully make that left turn, I think it's actually Alexander Street, which is right there.
Yeah, Alexandria or Elliott are one of those. So those cars, of course, if the owners own both properties, that may be a non-issue, but they will not be able to exit the Elliott Avenue.
Right, that's true, sir. Basically, with this, with this street closure and the eventual approved site plan, the applicant will make improvements so that vehicles will only be able to go one way onto the site. They won't be able to really park here anymore. There won't be any two-way traffic. This will all be one way going either onto the site or if you're on the left side, going onto the interstate.
Right, okay, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Thaxton, do you have any questions for Mr. Jackson?
No, sir, I do not.
Commissioner G? Commissioner G? Commissioner Coleman?
I have none.
Commissioner Barnes?
I have none.
Commissioner G, are you there?
I am back. I had slight technical difficulties, but I had no questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this, we will now begin the public hearing on item S-21-01. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Will the applicant for S-21-01 come forward to provide any additional information or comments? State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Kyle Hoyt. My address is 396 Evian Way, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I'm here with Joe Paragano. We are with Hoyt Barini on behalf of BKT Enterprises. Ryan Smigle with BKT Enterprises is also on the phone. We are happy to make ourselves available to answer any further questions. We appreciate the Planning Commission's time in hearing this request today, and we would just be available to field any further questions. Carl did a great job kind of outlining what we're proposing, and if there's anything else that's needed, we'll be available.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional questions of the applicant. I have none. Commissioner Thaxton?
I have none.
Commissioner G?
I have none as well.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have none.
Commissioner Barnes?
None.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item S-21-01. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. You would come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Press star six to unmute your mic, and you'll have five minutes. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second for item S-21-01 with conditions.
This is Sherri Thaxton. I'd like to make a motion to approve S-21-01 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner G. I second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second to approve S-S-21-01 with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve S-21-01. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved five to zero with conditions. Our next item, CA-21-02, citywide. By request of City Council, the City of Portsmouth is proposing to amend City Code, Chapter 4.2, Zoning Ordinance, Section 40.2-533G, and Section 40.2-532G, to reduce the requirement for two readings before City Council for the approval of zoning text, zoning map, conditional zoning amendment applications, and use permit applications to one City Council reading. Staff Coordinator is Julie Chopp. Will the coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Julie Chopp, planner with the City of Portsmouth. This presentation will provide details on the proposed code amendments to the city zoning ordinance in accordance with the May 4th Planning Commission resolution. The City of Portsmouth has traditionally required two readings before City Council for the approval, approval with conditions or prefers or denial of use permits and text and map and map amendments to the zoning ordinance. At the April 27, 2021, City Council meeting, City Council expressed support for reducing this requirement to a single reading. Therefore, staff was instructed by Planning Commission resolution to prepare this draft amendment to the zoning ordinance. The City of Portsmouth is proposing to amend Section 40.2-533 Use Permits Subsection G, Review and Action, and Section 40.2-533 Zoning Text and Zoning Map Amendments Subsection. Subsection G, Review and Action, by removing Statement 3 from each section, which states approval of any application shall require readings at two separate meetings of City Council with City Council affirmatively voting for approval at the second reading. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance to reduce the required readings for use permit and zoning text and zoning map amendments applications from two City Council readings to one City Council reading in order to improve the development process. At the June 8th City Council meeting, City Council will be simultaneously voting to amend the Procedure Section for Adoption of Ordinances and Resolutions in City Code Section 2-29B to ensure that the second reading requirement is removed from all City Code sections. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional questions for Ms. Chopp. I have none. Commissioner Thaxton?
I have none.
Commissioner G?
And none for me as well?
Commissioner Coleman?
I have none.
Commissioner Barnes? Commissioner Barnes?
I have none.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item CA-21-02. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. For the record, the applicant for this application is the City of Portsmouth. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-21-02. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable commissioners, and other neighbors. I hope that you can hear me clearly.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. It is one of my long-held beliefs as a lifelong citizen of the Democratic Republic that representative bodies under our form of government have, as their most important function, the receipt of public input on matters that come before them. And they say that life doesn't afford a lot of second chances. So it is also my belief that when there are second chances built into a process or incidental to one, they should not be relinquished lightly. In this particular instance, what the second reading provides in terms of public participation in the process of self-governance is an opportunity for people who were not able to attend the first hearing to have a makeup opportunity on matters of import. Many of the items that come before this commission and are subsequently forwarded to City Council involve changes that affect people who are living in neighborhoods, people who are business owners, people whose property may be affected beneficially or adversely by some action that you and City Council take. So it's vitally important that every opportunity, every reasonable opportunity be afforded to those whose property rights and those whose livelihoods are affected by your actions to make their opinions known on the actions that are contemplated. As much as you all endeavor to get the word out to the public about pending actions, I'm sure you've realized that there are many times when the usual means of communication, the prescribed modes of advertising these particular matters just don't turn out a lot of people with an interest in an item, and they subsequently show up at City Council. Well, the same thing is true in City Council meetings. Their advertisements don't get necessarily all the attention they deserve in due course. And so having that second hearing as a fallback provides additional opportunities for people who belatedly hear only as a result of preliminary action taken at City Council that there is something that will affect their quality of life or their livelihoods or their property values. Consequently, I ask that you reject this item as I believe it is not in the best interest of affording citizens an opportunity to be heard on matters that are of import to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, is there someone else on the call who would like to address this application? You have five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioners, before making a motion, please identify yourself.
This is Commissioner G. I move for approval of CA-21-02.
We have a recommendation. Is there a second?
This is Sherri Thaxton. I'll second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second to approve CA-21-02.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve CA-21-02. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Mr. Chairman?
Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, we need to go back to the first item that we deferred, the UP-21-08, to get a vote on the deferral.
Right, there needs to be a vote by the commission on the deferral of of UP-21-08. The chair is in need of a motion and a second.
This is Sherri Thaxton. I'd like to make a motion to defer UP-21-08.
Commissioners, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner G. I second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer UP-21-08. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is deferred for 90 days.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional items that you require further discussion of. I have none. Commissioner Thaxton?
I have none.
Commissioner G?
I have none as well.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have none. I have none.
Commissioner Barnes?
I have none.
Mister Baldwin, is there any further business for the Planning Commission today?
Yes, sir, and thank you, uh, Mister Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I just want to, um, advise you, I'm sure you're aware of this already, but we're anticipating the, um. Uh, next Planning Commission meeting, which I believe is on July the sixth, will be held in person as opposed to virtual. Uh, the meeting will be held in the City Council, uh, chambers, um, um. As you're, I'm sure aware, it's been a little bit about fifteen months since you last met in person. And so we would just ask the Planning Commissioners, um, to come in about one o'clock so we can, um, make sure everyone can find their appropriate seat. And we can go through the, uh, procedures for the electronic, um, voting. Um, we have, the city has installed new electronic voting, uh, equipment for the, uh, for those meetings up there. We want to make sure that everybody's, um, had a little bit of, uh, comfort and training on how that will all work, so. Um, I'd just like to also add, I'd like to thank everyone for all their patience and effort, uh, over this last fifteen months. I think our virtual meetings have been really well, um, received and done. I've been quite pleased myself and that's really a t- a testament to everyone else working so hard on this, including all of you Planning Commissioners for, um. Um, being such good, uh, Commissioners and, and making the effort to, um, to make these meetings as, as good as they can be and as, um. Citizen input friendly as they can be as well, so. Uh, that's all I had to say, just wanted to again remind you, uh, we will see you all in person on July the sixth.
Yeah, let me echo, uh, Mister Baldwin's, uh, comments. While it has been a challenge sometimes, Commissioners, we've done it extremely well and I'm extremely proud to have served with you. Being, having no other base or hearing no other business, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you much.